...with Chapter 551, opening to the Texas Government Code as amended. I call to order meeting the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District from Monday, October 22, 2012, at who's got the official AT&amp;T time, 7:03 PM. The Board may be in closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties to dispen- or dismissive public officer employee, including superintendent's evaluation and proposed amendment to the superintendent's contract, deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, deliberation of a negotiated contract for prospective gift to the district, deliberation about commercial or financial information that the Board has received from business prospect, or deliberation of the offer of financial or other incentive to a business prospect, and order to consult with legal counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation or an acceptable offer, or on a matter which the school district's legal counsel determines to be confidential. And according to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, and 551.071, respectively. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Torres, all favor that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and answer, we thank you, Board. Okay, let us turn to the pledge. We are fortunate to be joined by some young scholar students from Becker Elementary that have control of the floor. Come on up. Y'all look great. I like it. So, we're just gonna sit here until you tell us what we need to do? What should we do, Lucas?
Lucas.
Stand for the pledges.
Very good, thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Honora la bandera de Texas, te juro lealtad Texas, un estado bajo Dios, uno indivisible.
So, that Spanish is really remarkable. Why would that be? Why don't you introduce us to who we have? And maybe explain how they were so good at their Spanish.
I am happy to. We are Becker Elementary and we are a dual-language campus here in Austin ISD. So, our students receive instruction in both English and Spanish. And as you can see, the investment is greatly paying off. And so, we are very, very proud of them and they are excited to be able to communicate in both languages. And so, I would like to introduce the students tonight that led us in the pledges. We have Chloe Vandegrift and she's a kinder- sorry, a first grader at Becker in dual language. We have Alexiana Flores. She's a third grader, also in dual language. And Alexiana was in one of the pilot classrooms right ISD, so one of the very first students to take part in dual language. We also have Cedar Taves, another third grader, Griffin Taves, a first grader. Our leader tonight, Lucas Abinater, and Lucas is a fifth grader. And Lucas is able to read and speak Spanish in fifth grade at an eighth grade level. And so, we are very, very proud of that.
Where'd he go, Lucas?
And joining us is Lucas's brother, Logan, a second grader in dual language, and Jackson Green, a second grader in dual language.
Well, you guys are great. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for being here. Oh, I might introduce the world who you might be.
Yes, I'm Lakeisha Drinks, the proud principal at Becker Elementary.
That- so, give her a big round of applause and the entire team. So, how about if y'all come forward? Y'all wanna stay here? You wanna go down? Let's go- we're gonna come down, but just give us a second and we'd like to come down and meet all the students individually.
Give him like one second. Just follow her all the way around.
It's okay, it's between you two.
Hi, Chloe, thanks for coming in tonight. Y'all look pretty awesome.
Thank you, Alexiana.
Come get a closer picture, come on.
Come get a closer picture, come on.
I was okay. Really had like radio and my picture show up and made it though.
I can only imagine. It's like happening to you. We do have.
And you're going.
No.
Great.
I don't actually know. I don't know if I can say this. I don't actually know of the flag, but.
Okay, one more round of applause.
Okay, and my guess is that these- they may have come- we saw some taking some pictures, some family members and other staff. So, if you could please stand up, those wonderful folks, adults that are supporting these great kids, we'd like to give you a round of applause as well. So, teachers, parents, staff, anybody, thank you for being here. It's great to see y'all. There is- certainly, you're welcome to stay, but my guess is it's probably a good opportunity for these y'all to slip out, let the kids go watch the debate, or whatever else they might do. We'll try to get everybody else out. Or read and go to bed. Lucas is already reading.
Can't even have her sleep.
Okay, give me just a minute, folks. So, one more round of applause by group. Thanks. Zeebo?
Thank you all.
I've been informed that we have no one signed up for the public hearing on the school improvement plans for Burnett, Lamar, Pierce, Garcia, Mendez, Bettercheck Middle Schools, LBJ High School, and Eastside Memorial High School at the Johnston Campus. So, we will move to the next item. Then, we had an executive session scheduled this evening. At this point, I'm not aware of any reason to go into executive session. I haven't heard from anybody regarding that. So, we're moving right along, folks. I know there's a debate tonight that people may want to try to get to, so we'll see if we can get you out of here in reasonably good order. I'm gonna move to the President's update and I will pass this out to my fellow Board members. My apologies, this is a little bit long, so please can have your indulgence as I read through this. And I apologize for any mispronunciations of the basic English along the way. Okay, so, just to let you know, every year, the trustees do an evaluation of the superintendent. That evaluation varies in timeline. Last year, it's September, and typically with Dr. Kastarfen, it's been in September or earlier. This year, for a variety of reasons, it got delayed to October, in part because of the Board's full agenda in August, but also there were a number of requests for additional information that the Board asked for that caused us to sort of move past September and miss the September 20th, or the regular meeting in September. So, we waited till the regular meeting in October to release our findings of the superintendent's evaluation. And I'm gonna do that now, so please bear with me as I read this. "The trustees of the Austin Independent School District have completed our third annual performance evaluation of our superintendent, Dr. Maria Kastarfen, for the 2011-12 school year. We wish to share our findings with the community. The Board of Trustees has a responsibility to evaluate the performance of only one district employee, which is the superintendent. Her evaluation this year is largely based on reviewing the district's progress in the area of student performance, the status of certain key board priorities, and the superintendent's overall effectiveness in her ongoing responsibilities in the area of educational leadership, district management, and board and community relations. I hope the Board- the public recognizes, as the Board does, the incredible challenges of managing an urban school system with almost 12,000 employees, 123 campuses, a large food service function, bus operation depots, and transportation department, athletic and other complexes. The district has over 86,000 students, including 64% that are classified as economically disadvantaged. 23% of our students are considered English-language learners and 10% identified as needing special education services. Suffice it to say, Austin ISD is a complex and large organization with a diverse student population. On an overall basis, the Board is pleased with the progress made by the district under Dr. Kastarfen's leadership during the past year, continues to believe that she is the right person to lead Austin ISD, especially in light of the many challenges facing our district going forward. AISD, along with districts across Texas, is engaged in litigation against the state to address, among many items, the inadequacy and inequity of the existing school finance system. From a funding standpoint, after the state budget cuts last session, AISD had less money per pupil to spend, yet has a growing and increasingly diverse student population. The district isn't significantly benefiting from the increased tax base in Austin. Instead, the primary impact on the local taxpayers of the increased tax base comes in the form of increased recapture or Robin Hood payments to the state. Another legislative session in Texas begins in January with new leadership and chairs in several key legislative committees. Even beyond school finance, there will be a variety of hot public education topics, including standardized tests and in-class exams, student, campus, and district accountability, and the push for more school choice, including vouchers and expansion of the cap for state-authorized out-of-district charters. The federal elections in November, including the presidential race and the control of Congress, will almost certainly have a major impact on No Child Left Behind and the role of federal government in public education. Potential sequestration of the federal budget at year-end could have a significant adverse impact on Title I and other federal funding received this school year by AISD to support economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities. The uncertainty at the state and national level is immense. The Board as a whole believes that maintaining continuity in the superintendent and AISD's strong leadership team in the face of all this uncertainty is crucial. Further, Dr. Kastarfen has shown courage and willingness to take on the difficult task of actually trying to adapt, evolve, and innovate our district to respond to the current environment, which includes significantly reduced funding which adversely impacts both our students and our educators through larger class sizes, reduced social service supports, and inability to provide competitive compensation to our staff. We have an increasingly diverse student population. We have competition from neighboring school districts for our students and our staff. We have further competitions for our students from the rapidly growing state-authorized, out-of-state- I'm sorry, out-of-district charters that do not serve every child. We have enormous pressure to improve education in areas like East Austin where students have historically underachieved academically and have left their campuses for other schools in the district or for neighboring districts or charter schools. The need to incorporate technology and other modern best practices into the classroom to better engage and meet the needs and interests of today's students is paramount. There's also a desire to go beyond basic academics and provide an educational experience that emphasizes the whole child in areas such as social, emotional learning, fine arts, athletics, dual language, and other electives and extracurriculars. The importance of preparing AISD graduates for college, career, and life in the 21st century, including being good citizens and a meaningful participation in the central Texas economy. The breadth and depth of these challenges dictate the Board continues to be interested in the superintendent creating, leading, and maintaining a supportive and productive work environment, tone, and climate for all of our people, be they on a campus, in central office, or elsewhere in the district, as they're being asked to do more every year. The Board truly appreciates the effort of all of the district employees, educators, and staff who have committed to doing their best every day for every child. In addition, we know that the Board, the superintendent of the district, have to improve the effectiveness of our community engagement efforts as we move forward to deal with all the challenges and uncertainty facing AISD in public education. The Board also recognizes, given the size of AISD and the complexity and challenges of operating a major urban school system in a community as diverse and engaged as Austin, it's essential for the success of the district and to build public confidence in AISD and its leadership team that the Board Superintendent team of 10 is operating as effectively as possible. Therefore, the Board as a whole is also committed to coming together with the superintendent to focus on the future opportunities and challenges facing AISD. Now, let's turn to the performance of our students. Whether people like standardized testing or not, regardless of the accountability placed by the state and the federal government on the performance of AISD students on these tests on a single day, the perception of Dr. Kastarfen's effectiveness by many in the public and on this board is measured by the performance of AISD students on the state accountability test. To complicate matters, school year 2011-12 saw the transition from tax to STAR, a new accountability and standardized testing system in Texas. So, preparing for this transition and performance on such tests is a key part of the district's strategic plan and thus the superintendent's evaluation. AISD is an urban district and its performance results on the standardized tests are best evaluated relative to the performance of other large districts in Texas. For the 2011-12 school year, AISD has done well, as evidenced by the district having the highest overall pass rate on the initial end-of-course reading, writing, and Algebra I exams compared to the other Big Eight districts in Texas. The other Big Eights are really the other large urban or systems in Texas that generally AIS- Austin has to be compared to. Our middle and elementary school students are making gains on the initial STAR test in every subject compared to the prior-year tax equivalency exams and performance. We- AISD had the highest campus passing rate for adequately yearly progress under the federal accountability system when compared to all the other Big Eight districts. It's evidenced by the results. The student superintendent and her academic team did an excellent job preparing our district for the transition to the new STAR standardized test. As a reminder, the state's accountability ratings for AISD campuses from last year will be held consistent and constant for this year under the state's transition plan from tax to STAR. The Board does remain concerned that AISD did again not meet adequate yearly progress as a district and that 40% of our campuses also failed to meet AYP under the federal guidelines. Let me put that in a little bit of context, though. None of the other Big Eight districts met AYP as a district. In addition, at the state level, 72% of the Texas school districts and 56% of the Texas campuses also failed to meet AYP. Increasing federal No Child Left Behind standards are creating accountability challenges for districts and campuses across Texas and the nation. Nevertheless, the Board has indicated the superintendent that they would like to understand what it would take to improve the district's performance under the No Child Left Behind, especially as it relates to special education students. The district has struggled with this particular student group for years in achieving performance at a high enough level to meet the federal standards. But I do want to note that there are indeed other measures that the Board looks at beyond standardized tests to evaluate student engagement and performance. A few of these key achievements this past year include the following. AISD's student attendance continues to improve with an overall district rate of more than 95%, and for the second consecutive year, a high school attendance rate of over 90%. Just let you know, increased attendance translates to additional local funding under the state's school finance formulas, which are based on weighted average daily attendance. So, the more kids come to school, the more money the district has to spend on those students. Just as an aside, I think it's roughly about $35 or $40 a day that the district loses if a student is not in school. So, just understand, when people miss school, it actually costs us money and the student doesn't have the opportunity to learn. The district's graduation rates increased nearly 2% to 80% this year. Post-secondary enrollment rates for AISD graduates increased substantially five points, percentage points to 67%. AISD continues to perform well on NAEP, which is the National Assessment for Educational Progress, known as the gold standard for comparing performance across the country. In comparison to the other 20 urban districts included in the Trial Urban District Assessment, called TUTA, AISD ranked first in eighth-grade math, second and fourth-grade math, and fourth in both eighth-grade and eighth- fourth and eighth-grade reading. AISD also ranks above the national public and large-city averages on all four tests. AISD's students exceeded the state averages by 62 points on the SAT and were only two points below the national average and exceeded the national and state average composite scores on the ACT. AISD is getting better, both on an absolute basis and relative to the other urban districts in the state. However, while AISD's academic performance is improving, a significant achievement gap continues to persist and the rate of closing the gap is below the levels targeted in the strategic plan. The Board has indicated to Dr. Kastarfen that they would like to work with her over the next year to better understand the barriers to closing this gap and the approach and resources that are needed to accelerate improvement of the district's lower-performing student groups. From organizational perspective, the district continues to improve its systems and operational infrastructure, processes, and capacity. In spite of reduced funding, AISD remains fiscally sound with a strong bond rating. There continues to be a strong focus on the impact of educator quality, recognizing the critical nature of developing a forward-thinking and effective human capital strategy. In addition, the Board supports the ongoing effort to improve the district's information technology and performance management reporting capability. In addition, well more in addition, AISD has earned the top-performing district award for its management of business operations services in 2011 from the Council of Great City Schools. This recognition was based on demonstrated efficient and effective use of resources in critical areas like food services, maintenance and operations, safety and security, and student transportation. The establishment of a facility master planning framework laid the groundwork for a more sound planning process and cycle for both academic and facility initiatives. While the framework was approved mid-year during the school year 2011-12 and thus only partially implemented last year, it set the stage for better planning and engagement in the future. The past year's annual academic and facility recommendations, AFR, process also generated several positive enhancements for the district to begin in the 2011- oh, excuse me, 2012-13 school year, including continued expansion of the district's dual-language initiative, which we saw tonight with the Becker kids, the implementation of two in-district charter school programs at Travis and Lanier High Schools to help recover dropouts and support overage and undercredit students, and the establishment of two new pre-case centers at Dobian Webb to relieve severe overcrowding of the North Central Elementary Schools. Nevertheless, the district's experience as it related to the idea in-district charter proposal highlighted the need for AISD to improve its community engagement efforts, especially on major changes and/or on areas where possible change can be reasonably expected to generate significant attention or controversy, so that the parents, staff, and other community members have a more meaningful opportunity on the front end to provide input into the identification of the issues and challenges that need to be addressed in the development of a range of possible options and decision-making criteria. As indicated above, Dr. Kastarfen and the Board are committed to making the district's and community engagement efforts more effective. While all is not perfect and never will be, the Board as a whole continues to believe that AISD is moving on an overall basis in the right direction and improving the capability of our district to meet the needs of all of our students. Being a superintendent in a large urban district is a complex, demanding, and difficult task, and you will not make everyone happy. There are no easy answers. A best practice for successful districts is the continuity and position of the superintendent. Looking at the state and national landscape for large urban districts indicates that superintendent transitions, which occur too frequently, can really slow down progress. Thus, the current Board as a whole believes that AISD would be best served to continue its positive trajectory by keeping Dr. Kastarfen as our superintendent. We believe that she is capable of not only addressing the issues raised in our evaluation, but also continuing to raise the performance of our students and our district. We also feel strongly that she is a high-quality superintendent who we believe can and will build the relationships necessary with the Board, district staff, and our community to enable her to continue to lead the Austin Independent School District in that capacity for the foreseeable future. As evidenced by that commitment, the Board will take up an agenda item later this evening to extend the contract of Dr. Kastarfen for one year. If the Board approves that extension, Dr. Kastarfen's contract will be extended to June 30, 2015. Tonight's action is being proposed to demonstrate there's a mutual commitment on the part of the Board and the only employee that reports directly to the Board, Dr. Kastarfen, to see through the innovations and reforms already underway to more fully implement the district's strategic plan and to ensure that Dr. Kastarfen is here to help navigate Austin ISD through the school finance litigation, the next legislative viennium, and its associated financial and other impacts on our district. Dr. Kastarfen, thanks to you and your team for all the efforts and good work we have seen over the past year. The Board looks forward to continuing to work with you and your team in the future to meet the needs of our students, our staff, our taxpayers, and our community. That concludes the update. Thank you for your patience as I went through that. We are now turned to Citizens Communication, and we have several folks signed up this evening. As always, my apologies if I mispronounced your name in advance. So, we'll call you in groups of three. And the opening's law and the schools of this Board, there will not be a dialogue between the persons at the microphone and the Board, but we'll be taking notes in order to provide as much opportunity for input as possible within a limited time period. Each speaker will be allotted two minutes with a maximum of 30 speakers. And as the Board's longstanding practice, speakers must have signed up in person and can only sign up for themselves. The Board will not allow substitutions or yielding of time to others. As you come to the microphones, there's a device that will light up as you move through your two minutes of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please take the opportunity to sum up your comments and move on to the- so, we can move on to the next person. Each person who signed up will have the opportunity to address the Board. If you wish to address the Board this evening and- but are not called when the maximum's reached, which I do not think is the issue this evening, but irrespective of your- please know that you can submit your comments in writing or by email to theboard@trustees@austiniisd.org, or you can fax them, if you're still a faxer, at 414-1486. And we ask that whether you come to give praise or a complaint, that you reference a staff person by abbreviated- by position or by abbreviated last name, for example, Mr. D. or Ms. A., unless you're addressing the superintendent's schools of the Board, and then feel free to address us directly. The district is a local governmental body charged with serving the educational needs of our students, and Board meetings must be focused on meeting that charge. All regular Board meetings are televised and rebroadcast from ASD cable channel 22 and over the ASD website. We ask that audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for all others at all times. And the Communications Services Department, you probably thought I'd never get to this. Sorry, Crystal. The Communications Service Department provides a Spanish-language translator for audience members who need assistance when understanding- when addressing trustees or need assistance understanding comments made to trustees during the public hearing. And Citizens Communication, if you need this service during other portions of the meeting, please speak with the interpreter in Crystal Gonzalez- Casal, I'm sorry, Miss Benatzen. This communication specialist will now repeat this message in Spanish. Welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Buenas noches a todos, Presidente Williams, miembros de la Mesa Directiva, y Superintendenta Kastarfen. Soy Cristol Gonzalez, traductora e intérprete del distrito. Estoy aquí para prestar servicios de interpretación a las personas que se hayan presentado aquí para hacer sus comentarios ante la mesa directiva.
Thank you very much. Those kids that were here earlier would have understood all of that. Stacy Sekulas, David Edrich, and Pete Montoya. And again, my apologies if I mispronounced anyone's name. And Stacy, I thought there was a good chance I mispronounced your name. Come on up.
That was perfect. I'm Stacy Sekulas. I'm the mother of sons, and I'm here tonight to help you keep in the forefront of your mind the Austin School for Young Men. And most of you are probably all aware of the Austin- the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders that we've had in Austin for the last few years. And hopefully, you're all in agreement with me that it's past time that we open doors for her brother's school. I have a few things that I wanted to mention to you tonight regarding that. First of all, it's been my pleasure to be a community member on the Planning Committee for the Austin School for Young Men the last year and a half, and I wanted to make sure you know that you've had amazing, dedicated, informed committee that has been working hard and putting in countless hours to prepare a solid proposal for this school. And many of us, a core of us, are also more than willing to continue to volunteer our time and talents to make sure that the school's a success. Secondly, I'd also ask you to not only vote yes for the Austin School for Young Men, but also vote yes for opening the doors in the fall of 2013. We have a generous benefactor, as you know, in the Moody Foundation, and we want to make sure that, you know, he's not gonna wait around forever for us, so we want to make sure that we take advantage of this generous additional funding. Thirdly, I'd also like to you to, in whatever you do- Estoy aquí para prestar servicios de interpretación a las personas que se hayan presentado aquí para hacer sus comentarios ante la mesa directiva.
Thank you very much. Those kids that were here earlier would have understood all of that. The Stacy Sekulas, David Edrich, and Pete Montoya. And again, my apologies if I mispronounced anyone's name. And Stacy, I thought there was a good chance I mispronounced your name. Come on up.
That was perfect. I'm Stacy Sekulas. I'm the mother of sons, and I'm here tonight to help you keep in the forefront of your mind the Austin School for Young Men. And most of you are probably all aware of the Austin, the Ann Richards School for Young Women Leaders that we've had in Austin for the last few years, and hopefully you're all in agreement with me that it's past time that we open doors for her brother's school. I have a few things that I wanted to mention to you tonight regarding that. First of all, it's been my pleasure to be a community member on the Planning Committee for the Austin School for Young Men the last year and a half, and I wanted to make sure you know that you've had amazing, dedicated, informed committee that has been working hard and putting in countless hours to prepare a solid proposal for this school. And many of us, a core of us, are also more than willing to continue to volunteer our time and talents to make sure that the school's a success. Secondly, I'd also ask you to not only vote yes for the Austin School for Young Men, but also vote yes for opening the doors in the fall of two thousand and thirteen. We have a generous benefactor, as you know, in the Moody Foundation, and we want to make sure that, you know, he's not going to wait around forever for us, so we want to make sure that we take advantage of this generous additional funding. Thirdly, I'd also like you to, in whatever you do, please make sure that you do for our sons what you're doing for our daughters in Austin. And specifically, the Planning Committee is in agreement that we need a dedicated facility for the School for Young Men, just as the Ann Richards School has had a dedicated facility. And finally, if I could, I'd just like to leave you with some data. It's very simply laid out, but I think that once you take a look at these numbers, they'll have no choice but to vote yes for the Austin School for Young Men.
Okay, thank you. Hand it to Officer Hart there, that'd be great. Thank you so much. David Edrich, Pete Montoya, and Gabino Fernandez. Is David here? Okay, we may come back to him. Pete Montoya, welcome, Gabino Fernandez, and Frank Martinez. Welcome.
Good afternoon, President Williams, distinguished Superintendent, Dr. Christoffin, members of the board. I guess you know me already because I've been a few times here, but for others, I'm an alumni of Go Valley, Brooks, Allen Elementary, and Johnston High School. A few months back, a few years back, we met and with the superintendent and our District Two trustee, and we said we could not tolerate eleven or twelve years now of failure. We had met as a community, some of the parents, some of the district businesspeople and alumni, and we came before and we said we needed your help. You brought an idea to us and we sanctioned it. I'm here to tell you that I've been at every one of these schools this year, and the difference that the catalyst made in our community of bringing in an in-district school really has changed us. By, if you know our, our culture, if you make a change in our culture, it stirs us all up, for the good or for the bad. But in this case, it seems to have turned around. Our principal at the middle school, Ms. Vega at Martin Jerry High, you should see that school. The dress code, the kids not in the hallway, the improvement. The same thing goes with East Side Memorial at the Johnston campus. The hallways, when you walk through there, the kids are in classes, the tardiness has improved, and a total improvement. Don't believe me, I'm talking about the people in the TV land. Go by, take a few minutes, visit the schools, and see what a decision that you guys made has made for our community.
Please wrap up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gabino Fernandez, Frank Martinez, and Francis Martinez.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gabino Fernandez, and I will be addressing you as LULAC District Twelve Director and Coordinator of El Concilio, which is the Coalition of Mexican-American Neighborhood Associations. Both organizations are nonpartisan. Both organizations cannot endorse candidates. However, we do want to remind everyone that early vote began today. We want to educate our community of the importance of going to the ballot box and the importance of voting early. The ballot is a lengthy ballot. So, if you wait until early day, we're going to be there for a long, long time. So, I do want to thank President Williams for your commitment, your dedication, and your service to our community, because I know that you have always advocated for equitable education throughout the whole district. We also, as LULAC, like I mentioned, are open to all avenues of educating our community. Last week, we had the honor of dedicating the UT Elementary Building, and we had the University of Texas President Bill Powers be in attendance in East Austin. So, this is a positive anchor for our neighborhood. If you're from Austin, historically, it's always the negative things, jails and other things that are not wanted in the community. But in this case, we had, we have an anchor, an academic anchor, that can work in cooperation with all the other AISD schools, and it provides them an academic challenge, which in the end of the day is what's in the best interest of our children in providing an equitable education. While we cannot support any individuals or candidates, as LULAC and a civil rights advocate in the fight to have people of our color serve on boards, I will strongly suggest that the place-to position remain in the hands of a Latino. Thank you.
Please wrap up. Thank you. Frank Martinez, Francis Martinez, and Kayyadi Anderson.
Welcome. Good evening, Board and Superintendent. Glad to be here and glad that I'm alive today. A thanks to God. You know, I really, really appreciate the present board for doing what they did, that to change the inequities of the education east side of the highway. That's been a long and coming, and the previous boards evidently didn't have whatever it took to change that. And I appreciate this board for going through and changing some of the things inequities that have happened at the east side for many, many years. And I was part of that. I got a decent education, but I tell you, even though a lot of professionals also came out of the Johnston campus, we still lack a lot of, long ways to go there. We really do. And I appreciate the board that voted for it, and I hope that, we always, you know, hear that thing that we can agree to disagree, and I know nobody's going to be voting for everything in conjunction with everybody else, but we need to try to work with each other. And I know that people out there that are changing, trying to change things as far as the evaluation of the superintendent, to move it on, how can you get evaluated if you're just starting to come on the board? You know, I hate to be evaluated by a brand-new person that does not know what I've done in my job. So, go ahead forward and do your evaluation, because y'all know the superintendent better than anybody else. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Francis Martinez, Kayyadi Anderson, and Kiara Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Francis Martinez. I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to this board, and I definitely think that you deserve a pat on the back for all the good that y'all have done for our children. And also, I appreciate the changes that have been made for the better for the children, and I strongly advise and I strongly believe that District Two needs to vote for Sam Guzman so that we can go forward and educate our children, and they deserve a good education. Thank you.
Okay. Kayyada Anderson, Kiara Anderson, are the Andersons here? Oh, there you are. And then Larry Amaro. My apologies if I mispronounced your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Kiara Anderson. I'm here to support my daughter, Kiara Anderson. She's in the magnet program.
Can you pull the mic up just a little bit so we can hear you?
She's in the Fullmore Magnet Program, and she's, she just been inducted to the National Junior Under Society, so she's, her grade point average is pretty good. She's also editor of Fullmore Yearbook. She's in journalism and band and a whole lot of things. Well, she's, she's been having a problem at Fullmore. There's been a problem as far as teachers, as far as staff members losing work and blaming it on the kids, not once, several times. Parents, me myself, I've contacted teachers, they've called me, and in the process of asking about the work, being disrespected by them, following day, other teachers hear about it, they name my daughter, myself, and talk about us in class without us being able to defend ourselves, well, she was there to defend herself, but I wasn't. I think this is inappropriate, and it needs to be dealt with. My daughter is, has been one of y'all's top students. She's had, excelled beyond belief, and for her to want to come down here and speak on her own behalf speaks volumes. And she's just not an average student, she's above average. So, I'm just asking the board just to, I mean, just look at this, because this is not an average student, this is one of y'all's prized students, and she will excel, and she has been excellent, and she makes me proud. And this is what I've instilled in her. All I'm thinking I'm asking is a fair shake. Give her a fair shake, you know, because the world we live in now is hard as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kiara Anderson, Larry Amaro, Drew Sheverley.
Hello, my name, my name is Kiara Anderson, and as my dad said, it's been a problem with my grades, and this is what's been going on. My teachers have been losing my work day after day. It's either an essay to a project to a homework assignment, and they're saying it's my fault, but as a student, I'm turning it in, and they're the ones losing it, but they don't want to man up to it. And I've talked to my principal about, but she doesn't care. She said she didn't care, and me and a group of girls have went into her office, and she said, "Well, I don't care about it." And as a principal, you all think that she cares. Yes, she tells the AISD and the parents and the students she cares, but outside of school she doesn't care, she doesn't do anything to fix the problem. And I'm in like a various amount of your electives, I'm in band, choir, journalism, as my dad said, and to be in those things and to be treated like that, I think it's unfair, and if they're just losing one student's work, it's just not, it's unacceptable. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for being here tonight. Larry Amaro, Drew Sheverley, and Mike Corwin.
Good evening, President Williams, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Christoffin. As I was listening to President Williams earlier, going over that long list of items that Dr. Christoffin has gone through, my gosh, I was out of breath just thinking about all those things that she's done. Does she ever rest? I don't know. But that is a big accomplishment to do all those things that she has done, and I know that she constantly says, whatever the board wants, that's what I'll do, over and over and over she says that. And that's all we can ask of someone, and with their great leadership, she's followed through on the things that you've asked. I know that in meetings with her, with Mr. Guzman, under his leadership, we brought about some changes that we needed in East Austin District Two. And I know Ms. Bradley as well is doing the same thing in her district, and I know the people that she meets with get along with her, and she listens to them, just like Mr. Guzman has. So, I hope they'll continue to do the great work that they're doing. So, applaud this board for bringing in Dr. Christoffin in the first place and to, for keeping her so that we can continue the changes that we've started, especially in East Austin, Northeast Austin, Southeast Austin, and the rest of Austin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Drew Sheverley, Mike Corwin, and Lori Barzano.
Great. Thank you. President Williams, Vice President Torres, members of the board, Superintendent Carl Starfin, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Tonight, you have an important decision on extending the superintendent's contract. I want to tell you from the twenty-five-hundred members of the Austin Chamber of Commerce that we're extremely proud of the improvements that Austin ISD has made. Why are we proud? We're proud that this is the only Texas school district that's been gaining enrollment. We're proud that this is the only school district in the United States in an urban setting that is, still has its middle class, which is a big selling point when we sell to companies. When, when we look at academic leadership, y'all set a strategic plan, you put targets in it. When you accomplish it for today's ninth graders, a thousand more students are going to graduate. These are going to engender difficult decisions, but why are we confident that you'll accomplish it when you stay the course? We're confident because you have one of the best superintendents in the country, and it is in a time where a number of baby boomers have been retiring in droves, and you don't have a thin pool. You have the highest student achievement in AISD history in two thousand and twelve. You have the highest graduation rate, the highest college readiness rate, the highest passage rate on the tax in the history of this district. You're the best among Texas urban school districts. You're the best among US urbs in fourth grade and eighth grade math. Your Hispanic and African-American students are two grade levels ahead of those on the West Coast and on the East Coast that we compete with for jobs, and you are in one of the strongest financial positions you've been in. This is the big stuff, this is the important stuff, and you're moving in the right direction. It's going to be hard to do that strategic plan, it's going to be hard to make those decisions. The last thing you want to do is start throwing it into question when you, when you're not on the same page with your superintendents. We encourage you to strongly support the direction of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Corwin, Lori Barzano, and Sidney Behringer.
Hi. So, I'm here to speak to the issue of the superintendent's contract. As we all know, today's the first day of voting, and it's an extremely momentous choice that's before the Austin community right now, and it seems unfortunate that we actually have to remind ourselves about the importance of democracy. It's a value we cherish, and it means that here in the Austin community, if we don't necessarily like a particular direction that our school district is going in, we, as a people, have a right to vote and try to create a change in direction. And that's something that we ought to support, and I'm troubled by this discussion, we heard it from the previous speaker right now, that somehow by the Austin, the Austin community voting for a change of direction, that this is being now equated with, you know, a potential disaster. This is what we've been hearing from our business community. Now, I know, I heard the, the list of achievements that President Williams listed off, and they're valid, but the criticisms that we've been hearing about the district leadership over this last year are valid, too, whether they have to do with the leadership style, whether they have to do with the particular policies that have been pushed and so forth. And I think it's on that basis, on the eve of this election, when we know for a fact that one way or another, change is coming to this dais, it does not make sense to, to, to extend this contract. And, you know, frankly, just following how this has all played out, it really honestly feels like democracy is being trumped by the wishes of the Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, and I'll just say lastly that, you know, and I also understand the concerns that were raised about stability, people need to have stability in their jobs. However, I wish that courtesy had been extended to all the teachers who had their contracts ripped up when they were ripped in two thousand and eleven. What I would basically say is, what, how this is playing out tonight just comes, it brings it all back, all the criticisms that we've had about the leadership style of the board. It doesn't make sense to push this through tonight, and I'll just say to people out there on TV land, if you agree, that it's very important we get out and vote, because this vote is extremely important, and we do need some change in here. Thank you.
Lori Barzano, Sidney Behringer, and Clara Ruder.
Good evening. Lori Barzano, parent, taxpayer, Chair of the Coalition to Strengthen Austin Urban Schools. Three points in two minutes. First, the Coalition again requests that AISD implement an authentic, transparent, uniform, inclusive, community-based process with a reasonable timeline for making decisions such as closing a school or repurposing a campus. Transparency and inclusiveness are cornerstones of community trust. A trust AISD wounded with the Facility Master Plan last spring and killed with approval of the IDEA Charter last fall. We spoke en masse on both issues. The board and administrators seemed not to listen or to simply turn a deaf ear. As parents, we object to the district treating us like a public relations problem. We are vital voices on needs in our communities, and we are the legitimate authority on what's best for our children. Second, when the board approves spending two million dollars, it owes the taxpayers due diligence of good governance. We deserve full transparency in such allocations, not no-bid contracts with education resource strategies. When we elect trustees, we entrust them to act as good stewards of the district's resources. This requires transparency, inclusiveness, not private deals that drive district policy without taxpayer knowledge or agreement, core elements of stewardship and accountability. Third, as a parent and voter, I find it appalling the board would approve another extension of the superintendent's contract now. An outgoing board should not encumber an incoming board with a contractual obligation that extends beyond its current tenure. The incoming board can decide for itself. I hope they'll listen to the community feedback in evaluating the superintendent's performance. Thank you for listening, and if you will allow me the indulgence of a footnote here because of... And if you will allow me the indulgence of a footnote here, because it's quite ironical that Becker Elementary was the school up here today. It's almost eight years to the day I stood before this board, who was voting to close Becker Elementary. And it was a group of parents who came up with the plan and put together the program for the dual-language program that's alive and well there now. And it's odd that now this board sits up there applauding that, when eight years ago to the day, the board was fighting it. Thank you.
Cindy Berenger, Claire Ruder, and Amanda Austin.
It should be clear to anybody who believes in even the most rudimentary form of democracy that the next elected board should be the one who decides to extend Kostarfen's contract way into the future. It's a rudimentary fact. It's, if you have any use for democracy, that's the way it should be. And the Chamber, I'm sick of hearing about the Chamber of Commerce and what they want, quite frankly. The Chamber of Commerce has a really ugly history of influencing elections for some very ugly reasons. And perhaps the main reason they shouldn't be involved in the education of my grandchildren or anybody else's is the fact that they're majorly involved in climate change denial. Bill McKibben, the environmentalist, has called them the biggest front group for ExxonMobil that there is. No one questions climate change anymore, the validity of it. And getting into the school districts, which they've tried to do and deny climate change, is unacceptable. And they should not be involved in any way in influencing the education of our children.
Thank you. Claire Ruder, Amanda Austin, and I'm going to see if David Edrich has come back.
Dear current board and superintendent, it has recently come to the attention of concerned constituents that tonight, you are going to try to extend the superintendent's contract. At the League of Women Voters Forum yesterday, several school board candidates indicated the importance of listening and taking time to study the issues. Okay, listen. The superintendent's contract was already extended to 2014. Why extend it further before new people get elected? Give it time to see how the two entities, the new board and the old superintendent, work together. Take time to study, who put it on the agenda to even have a vote in the first place? Austin Chamber of Commerce? With all due respect, the board and the superintendent are supposed to answer to the public, parents, teachers, community members, not to private interest groups like the local chapter of the Chamber of Commerce. A few of the candidates at the forum yesterday support a certain in-district charter school called IDEA. Most do not. But all candidates seem to agree that the approach of acting first and reflecting later was flawed. Interesting that the candidates who wanted IDEA all along are saying that we should give IDEA one or two years so that they can prove themselves, even though the system was flawed. The other candidates feel like the local community should have been consulted first, and then, because of overwhelming opposition, IDEA should never have been brought to the table for a vote in the first place. But again, all candidates agree that the approach of acting first and reflecting later was flawed. Don't make the same mistake twice. Listen, give it time. Voting today would be rushing through your own agenda. It would mean not taking time. It would mean ignoring the voices of those of us who you are supposed to be publicly serving. Study today, and let the new leaders lead tomorrow. If you are no longer going to continue to serve on the board, at least you can say you ended your term in good conscience by listening carefully to your constituents. Do it for the good of the children.
Amanda Austin and David Edrich.
Hello, board. What a dynamic year, and I want to first say, I appreciate that I hear you guys saying that in the next steps, that one of the things you want to work on is the community engagement and listening, and I think that that's awesome. Although there is something about this process right here to me that feels like there's a glass wall, the fact that there cannot be dialogue and that you cannot ask questions and engage with us actually makes it really hard. And part of like, I mean, my job at least, in working with families and stuff, part of that is whenever you listen to someone, you try to reiterate what you've heard so that they know that you've been heard. And I'm hoping tonight that you'll reiterate that we've been heard whenever we're asking you to please not vote on the contract tonight. This does not mean that we're saying we don't want Dr. Kostarfen's agenda to be extended, however, it is saying that, I feel like it's unfair and undemocratic for this board who we know is going to be changed, based on the people who are definitely leaving and possible other people winning the election. I just feel like it's not fair. And I have the same question about the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not quite sure why Drew Shebley and the Austin Chamber of Commerce has such a large say in what happens in our school board. To me, that seems like it's undemocratic as well, and that the community's voices should be what's most important. Not to say that he's not part of the community, but if you hear a parent of somebody from a school saying something like that should mean more than the Chamber of Commerce. I don't understand what this connection is. And I think that I'm just going to end by saying that I really hope that you start the process of listening to the community tonight, since you said that that's something you want to practice, and I hope that you pull that off the agenda for vote tonight and hold it off until another time. Thank you.
Thank you. And David Edrich, welcome.
Hello. I wanted to talk about bringing dual-language programs to low-L neighborhoods. I went to the Austin ISD dual-language meeting last week, and I was very impressed with the level of dedication to the cause for dual-language programs. The meeting made several important points about being bilingual, the great advantage in life it gives in increasingly global society, improvement in the cognitive function in children, and to me, most importantly, that the early years are probably the best time to acquire a new language. Now, all this sounded great and exciting to me, but as it turns out, it's just not available in my school, nor any of the elementaries near me, even if they were open to transfers. I just happen to live in a very low-L area. Implementing dual-language doesn't work there. We do not enough Ls to match with non-Ls. And even if I wanted to drive my children to a different school, it doesn't make much sense, because the school I have is quite a strong one. I'd be giving up so much. So the issue I want to make here is, how can we make available the opportunity that dual-language learning gives to low-L areas? I know interest exists. When I talk to parents, they always say they would like to be able to enroll their child in such a program. They're just never aware of the possibilities. They don't even know that IISD has language programs elsewhere. The people at the meeting were very helpful about discussing this. They said that kids with good English skills can readily handle immersion. They told me there were programs called reverse one-way that can be implemented in place with low-Ls. And I broached the idea that it may be possible to specifically transfer in-Ls. But regardless of the details, what I know is, elsewhere in the world, it's common to be immersed in two languages in school. There is no need to have Ls to offer foreign language immersion. So what I need is to make, is to have a way so that I can make something like this happen in my school. If the district can come to my school and advocate such a program, educate local parents about possibilities, as well as the elementary school administration, I think it would help. I find my schools to be quite receptive to good ideas if they can be made practicable. I just wish I were aware of this before my first child entered kindergarten. I would just like to give her a chance to have this for the first grade.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's all that consists, is there more? Did I miss it? Oh, I must not have got card 17. Tony Rayner, I'm so sorry, Tony. There's a green card somewhere with your name on it, but it's not in my hand. So come on up. You get to wrap us up this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry about the props. I'm a mother of two at Eastside Memorial High School. I know you know that, but for TV land. And my oldest son is starting his fourth year there now. Although I appreciate the board and your service, especially unpaid service, God bless you for it, and I agree with 80% of AISD business, what's happened to East Austin schools, especially my son's campus, has been horrible to the students. And I can sum it up by this series of yearbooks from the last three years. This one from, I'm sorry, from the spring of 2010. Basic school colors, silver and black, with a rather powerful paw emerging from its cocoon into the world. This was the last year that we were academically unacceptable. The one in the middle is the next year, before we knew that we had made it and we were academically acceptable. This is a powerful celebration of life. They were so, this was the second year with the same principal, and this is such an amazing visual graphic of the empowerment of the student body and their excitement with being there. And then, October 20th, 2011, they found out at that time, after, I'm sorry, after all the principal stuff, just for the record, I really like Brian Miller, and I've got a lot of hope for Mr. Miller, and I hope that he's allowed to stay for a period of time. I have great confidence in him. But if you can look at the last year's yearbook, last spring, okay, it looks like a ghost wrapped up in a constantly twisting, changing environment.
Please.
Yes, sir. I had nothing to do with these yearbooks, except for purchasing them. The student body, I think this is such a clear expression of how they have felt. What you have done to Eastside Campus has damaged those students, and
Thank you.
It was an error. Thank you.
We did have one board, just to make sure, there was one person signed up that didn't want to speak, and you may have seen the card in the materials. And then, Dr. Kostarfen, there's obviously a couple of issues raised on some of the campuses. If you could have someone look at that and give an update to the board, that'd be great. Okay, board. Thank you for the public, thank you for your input. Let us now turn to the consent agenda, which is item 8. And we have one item, which is, when you look back at the consent agenda, it is set up for a separate vote already, which is consent agenda item 16-1. So I will entertain a motion or discussion. Ms. Moya.
Mr. President, I want to make a motion for approval, consent agenda items 11 through 15.
Is there a second? Any seconds? Okay. Second, Mr. Guzman, do you have a second?
I think item number 16 would be for a separate vote.
It is. I left it off. I just said 11 through 15.
Yep, that's right. So, second, Ms. Guzman. Discussion. Mr. Snyder.
Mr. Williams, I'd like to pull item 12.1 for discussion and vote, please.
Okay.
I didn't hear which one, Robert.
12.1.
12.1.
Okay. So we got a couple of people that like to pull 12.1, so let's do that. So Ms. Moya, will you modify your motion to exclude 12.1?
Move approval of consent agenda items 11, 12.2 through item 15.
15-1, okay. Mr. Guzman, will you second that? So that's seconded. Okay, discussion on that. I'll favor that motion, please raise your right hand. Everything but. Okay, passion and answer, thank you. Let's move to, can we do 16.1 before we get to 12.1? Okay, so motion on 16.1.
Move approval of consent agenda item 16.
Is there a second? Second, Ms. Bristow, thank you. Discussion. I'll favor that motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, abstained? Passed seven with two abstentions. 12, let's go to agenda item 12.1. Mr. Snyder.
Mr. Williams, I have a mind that, I'm not quite sure why we're extending a contract that already has 18 months left on it. And to me, that's a very valid question in terms of just the fiscal responsibility of doing so, and the position it puts the board in, whether it's this board or another board, or whatever it is. So, I mean, the current contract doesn't expire for 18 months, and I think we should just leave it as it is for the time being, that we can extend the contract at any time, whether it's this board that wants to do it before next month, or whether it's another board that wants to come forward and do it at some other point in time. But I would think that the best thing that we could do is just leave the contract question on the table at the moment.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Ms. Parksdale.
Thank you. I have a different approach to why I think this is important to call for a second vote. The board has very few jobs, and one of those is oversight of the superintendent and her job. And I think it's important for our community to feel like that there is a very clear vote on support of, or not support of, for the superintendent from every board member and not have it buried in a consent agenda. And I don't use that term in a loaded way, just in like, technically, that's what it is. So for those out there who have said, or in TV land or in person, that this is an issue of democracy, it isn't. Very often, I find myself in disagreement with a statement like that, but I did advocate for an up or down vote for this board on the superintendent, for folks that have overseen her performance for the last year. I think it's fair to her, and I think it's important and right for the district. So I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lavoy.
I won't belabor the points, because many have spoken tonight, but for many of the reasons that I've heard tonight, I believe this decision should be left to the new board. This board has already extended the superintendent's contract. The contract is already in effect through June 2014. So to act would hamstring what all speakers have agreed tonight is going to be a new board. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Guzman.
I'd like to clarify that we also had speakers that urged us to move ahead with this vote. So it was not all speakers, it probably was a good balance for that matter, but we had speakers out there that urged us to go ahead and vote. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, I'm going to, I'm actually support this motion to extend it. And we typically deal with the extensions and the contract decisions when we do the evaluation. And for those of you that were at the community forum that was held here, and there was questions about the superintendent's contract, the feedback that I heard from most of the candidates was, they won't know enough. It's not like they'll get on the board and be able to extend the superintendent's contract. They won't, haven't been around a year, they haven't been part of the evaluation system. There's the context of the whole. And our responsibility as a governance board is to make sure there's continuity in our district, strengthen our district moving forward. Yes, the leadership may change, the governance may change, but our responsibility is to the kids, the staff, and this community on an ongoing basis. I understand there's some that don't necessarily support the extension, and that's fine. There's many others, I think, in the community that do. But the responsibility that we have is to look at the district as a whole. I've been to lots of training with lots of TASB, Mr. Snyder's been to the Leadership TASB and others. Ms. Moya's on the TASB board. There really is a best practice about making sure you have a constancy and consistency and continuity in strong superintendents. I've had the opportunity, and probably I'm guessing some of my colleagues have, at looking at the landscape of superintendents across the state, across the country. It's a very difficult environment. The transition in superintendents creates instability in a district. Part of the signal of an approval of a contract is knowing that we're having consistency in the leadership. Part of the signal of not approving an extension is also telling the superintendent and her team, it's time to go look someplace else. For me, when I look at whether it's right or wrong, but that's the reality of the way things work. And for me, I have confidence that I want this superintendent and this team here to lead us going on. There's a lot of issues, there's a lot of concerns. We've got to get better. The conversations the board had with the superintendent, which somewhat were reflected in the conversations, I think she gets that, I think the district gets that. We have to get better. We owe it to our community. And I don't think we're blind to that. But at the same time, what's part of our district is we have 123 campuses, we have 86,000 kids, we have a lot of stuff that's going really well. This is one of the best urban districts in the country. And I know people are mad about some items, but what I don't hear them talking about is all the things of the district. In lots of parts of our community, there are things going very well, there's a lot of challenges, and there's a lot of urban districts that are struggling finding a superintendent with continuity. And when those, when there's instability in the leadership, there's instability in the district. And for the best interests of all of our kids, I think it's important to keep the superintendent and then make us better, work better with our community, work with our team. But I want this team here. From my personal perspective, I think we're better served by this superintendent and her team than we are by any other superintendent team that I look in the state of Texas. So I'm going to support this, knowing that there's concerns and questions, but I also heard the candidates at the candidate forum saying, basically, don't the candidates at the candidate forum saying, basically, don't put it on us, because we're brand new. Y'all, you know, the decision to evaluate a superintendent or to extend the contract is really up to this board. We did the evaluation, this is what we do. And I realize the new board can come in and make a decision that might be different than what this board did. But our responsibility is to our employee at this time and to this district at this time. And in my responsibility as a governance member, I think it's appropriate to extend the superintendent's contract at this time for one year with no other changes to the contract. Other comments or questions? Okay, Ms. Moya.
Move approval of consent agenda item 12.1.
Is there a second? Mr. Torres, second. Discussion. All favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed? So pass seven, two. Thank you, Board, thank you, community. Okay. And thank you, Dr. Christoffin, for your good work, and we look forward to you and your team kind of helping get us through what's going to be an incredibly challenging next few years in public ed, particularly depending on how the presidential election turns out, folks. It could get worse before it gets better. So let us now move to the superintendent's report, and the, we have a discussion regarding the timeline for a bond, which is an important decision for this board and this community about continuing to invest in our schools. Dr. Christoffin.
Mr. President, trustees, tonight the board is scheduled to take action on a proposed timeline for a bond election that would take place in May 2013. This timeline has been developed by the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, or otherwise known as the CBAC, a superintendent advisory committee that's charged with evaluating the district's major capital improvement and facility infrastructure needs to determine projects to be included in the scope of AISD's bond proposal. The committee has reviewed facility requests from individual campuses, as well as requests made at the district level to further support our school campuses. The district has identified approximately $350 million at minimum in systemic repairs as part of the district-wide facility condition assessment. Staff along with the CBAC is crosswalking the campus and district requests to ensure that we are duplicate, I mean, eliminating any duplications in the request, so that we can have a tight proposal at some point in the early winter, in the February timeframe. But tomorrow, on October 23rd, this Thursday, and the October 25th, the CBAC will present its work to date and seek feedback from the community on proposed categories for inclusion in the bond package and overall priorities that should be considered. The CBAC has met 11 times this year, including a full day retreat on September 29th to review information about the facility master plan framework, our school and facility summary priorities, our demographic analysis, and our bond finance strategies and tax rate impacts. Further, as part of the process of developing the preliminary scenarios and for the annual academic and facility recommendations, known as AAFR, the CBAC has received detailed information on those things that were originally AFRs but are now moving over to the CBAC to be considered as bond projects, and would need capital improvement funding as part of the bond program. Now, just to give you a sense of all these big areas, and they are very large buckets, things like systemic repairs, maintenance, safety and security, food services, transportation, contract and procurement services, technology, library services, and educator quality, plus all the schools in the district, is really what we're talking about. Based on all the feedback and information that they've gathered over the course of their work, the CBAC will present a preliminary scope of work to the board at its January 14th, January 14th, 2013 work session. Of course, this is contingent upon your approval tonight of a proposed bond timeline leading up to a bond election of May 2013. The timeline includes the presentation of the preliminary scope of work for January 14th and the ordering of an election at the February 21st, I'm sorry, February 25th, 2013 board meeting. The CBAC is prepared to work within this timeline to finalize its proposed scope of work. Mr. President, trustees of the board, you have before you the administration's recommendation for a May 2013 bond timeline.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Christoffin. Just to make clear, we can approve the timeline, which is a calendar. That does not mean that we are approving that we will have an election in May of 13, but it sets the calendar, so the path moves forward, and then the board will make a decision later. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear, and I think Dr. Christoffin was pretty clear about that, is that this is not a decision to have a bond election, but to really approve a calendar to enable us to have a bond election if the board so chooses in early 2013, after all the work with the community bond advisory committee and community input occurs. Okay, let's open up for comments or questions regarding the timeline. Ms. Moya.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to start off our discussion this evening. I move approval of the proposed timeline of activities and milestones for a proposed May 2013 bond election. It's Exhibit A in our board meeting notebook.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Torres. Discussion. Ms. Schneider.
Dr. Christoffin, I looked at the agenda calendars for the board in November and December and have a reasonable idea of what's available in January. And I'm not really opposed to a timeline for a bond. It just seems, as I said with the CBAC meeting, or a meeting with the CBAC tri-chairs that we had last week, that this seems exceptionally rushed. I mean, I'm finding it difficult, looking at our November and December agendas, to see when the board is actually going to discuss items that are in the bond. I will note that from the presentation here, and even the last presentation with the tri-chairs, there is no reasonably defined scope of work or cost of what the bond will be. In fact, my impression of the scope of work was it was really more of a Christmas wish list for somebody than it was items that are gonna help the district move forward in some reasonable way. So I'm noting that to actually do a May of 13 bond, that we have to get things pretty well in gear for February. And I'm trying to find out when we're gonna be able to discuss that. I mean, my reasonable look at things says we have about six, maybe eight weeks, mainly early next year, to discuss what this bond is gonna look like.
Dr. Christoffin.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Schneider, I heard three things in your, in your request for a response. One is the calendar, two is the timeline, maybe four, the cost and the scope of work being referred to as a Christmas wish list. So I'm gonna start at the beginning. You, along with trustee Torres and led by trustee Brister, participate every month with me on planning for the board's calendar, its agenda, and when and what we discuss. We have gone back to your former bond timelines and looked at how many times the board has talked about things, when the scope of work comes forward, what the CBAC is and is not supposed to do, and how those things are supposed to play out in a calendar. There is nothing about this bond approach that's different to the 2004 or the 2008 bond process. As a matter of fact, I've been very impressed with the diligence and the commitment of this Citizens Bond Advisory Committee that has been working nonstop since, you know, the summer. I mean, I mean, most of these people have been working with me for the last year and a half on the work group. I think you all know, because you nominated people to serve on this advisory committee, of which I accepted every proposal that the, for a person that the board put forward, and that these people are very competent, capable, caring citizens and residents of Austin, who have put together a timeline that they think is reasonable and have been very diligent about going through their work. So first, I don't think that the timeline is rushed at all. We have talked extensively as a board, not just because of this bond, but because of potential tax ratification elections, even before today, where it was clear that we are not the only people that might be on a ballot. So it's not just our work, it's how our work plays out with all the other taxing jurisdictions in the Austin area. And so I think they've been very thoughtful about all the different players and things that come about on a ballot, what year might be appropriate, and they have settled on May 2013. And I do, as you can see in this recommendation, support their diligence in this area. As far as cost, I think we've been, I think they've been very transparent with the community and have talked openly. I think I've used just the $350 million of safety and security pieces since before we even started talking about a bond. That's been no secret in Austin. Walk through any school, and by and large, they have leaking roofs, their plumbing doesn't work, there are lots of improvements, everything from athletic fields to what's happening in a classroom that we could be doing and need to be doing for our kids and families. But the cost starts at $350 million as a minimum, and it goes upwards of a billion dollars, and then they are working to shave that down to be, to be assured that we are doing what we need to do, but also not just the minimal requirements of safety and security. This is a bond that's gonna really push the envelope on those things that I described, academics, technology, and other systems needs in the district that's gonna put Austin in the place that it needs to be to move forward. I, and I think that everyone knows that the reason why they're having these community meetings and talking tomorrow and Thursday, and as many times as they have their meetings, they have citizens communication, that they have really laid out, you know, the largest scope that they're considering, and trying to do that in balance with what the M&amp;O side of the House is about and what we can actually afford to implement. And, and I think we would be doing this Citizens Bond Advisory Committee a great disservice, referring to their work as a Christmas wish list. It is far from that, to say the least. They have asked our staff and our schools to, yes, tell them the largest scope, to give them a midpoint, and to give them a low point, and they get in there and really, you know, debate and ask good questions. And we've done a lot of additional research and work around these things. But I don't want to imply at all that the people of this community, and there are some 50 some odd people that sit on this advisory committee, are just, you know, looking at the wishes and desires of anything AISD staff are putting in front of them. It's just the opposite. They're being thoughtful about our growth, they're being thoughtful about our minimum needs, and they're being thoughtful about what it's gonna take to ensure that Austin Independent School District is still on the map, moving forward in the right ways with the supports that they need. So as far as I have seen, and I work on these things every single day with my facilities, leadership, and all the volunteers that serve on multiple advisory committees, multiple planning teams, this Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, and my work group, that there hasn't been more work on facilities in the last year and putting together this bond package than all year since the last bond in 2008. So I'm really pleased with the work. I think that we're moving in the right direction, and I hope that this whole board can support a timeline that helps keep Austin and its needs for its bond on track for the kind of demographics and students that we have today.
Ms. Schneider.
Dr. Christoffin, you raised some points I'd like to address. First of all, I've actually attended several of the CBAC meetings and seen the presentations by staff, and that's why I refer to it as Christmas wish list. It's not coming from the CBAC, it's coming from presentations made by staff. And I know the CBAC has gone in and asked them, well, give me something 10% less or 20% less, and staff has tried to do so. But I haven't seen anything that says, this is how we need to relook at our facilities to make sure we're doing the best that we can, and then move forward there, rather than trying to say, everything else needs to get done too. You raised the issue about a TRE. My understanding from the question last time we met with the CBAC was that if we did everything that the AFR process is doing, plus did what's, was on the table at least, or being discussed, not necessarily on the table, but being discussed for the bond at that meeting, that it would take all the money for a TRE, plus additional money coming from our fund balance presumably, and things like a pay raise for our staff would not even be anywhere remotely on the table. Is that still a fundamentally correct statement?
The, as far as figuring out how much the district can afford in its maintenance and operations budget is part of what we, that I know our CFO and our chief operations officer and people in the CBAC are very aware of, and that we work through with every project and are analyzing with detailed budget sheets. Y'all have, I delivered another set just this Thursday, so that we are making sure that anything that we would put in a bond that would require M&amp;O support has been thoughtfully worked through, out, I mean, we're even going out 10 years to ensure that we're looking to the future and not setting up the district for failure on any front. So yes, if you take every, absolutely everything at the max, at the maximum level, and try to play that out in the impact on M&amp;O, absolutely, we don't have enough money to do everything. They all understand that. I've talked to them extensively. We just have meetings today where our CFO is running through scenarios for them to help everyone understand what it means to pass these bond projects and then have to run and open schools or programs. So, you know, what I cannot give this board today, and I think it's unrealistic to even imply that we have the answers, is that we have all of it figured out before the CBAC gets to finish all of their work. So if, at the end of the day, come February, I can't recommend that we move forward with a bond package, or that I believe that we can't afford to run some of these projects. These are things that we're gonna negotiate and figure out, but if it's not possible up to a certain point, that will be my recommendation. I don't think it will help Austin at all to overpromise and underdeliver. Now, as far as the prioritization, I mean, part of what the CBAC co-trichairs and our work group will often give me feedback after listening to some of our board meetings, is when we criticize the work that they're doing while they're in the process of doing the work, and they are really in the development stages. Right now, all you're doing is approving a potential timeline. As Mr. Williams said, it doesn't mean that you're gonna go forward, and it certainly doesn't mean that we're gonna do everything that everyone may have asked for in a bond plan. But I know, I personally, in this very room, held meetings with my leadership team, prioritizing our work and our request to the bond, to the CBAC, much to their chagrin, people in this community really want us to push the envelope on, on our bond projects. And if anything, the administration is the one who is saying, let me prioritize a little bit more so that we can ensure that the, that all the right things get put to the top, and only those things that might be, you know, beyond that get considered if we get, you know, pushed in a limited bond situation. But, but, you know, I, I hear you, I know you go to those things, I know I help prepare for a lot of them, and we have really worked as a staff to do the kind of prioritization that the CBAC has asked for, and I think that we're in a good spot. But, you know, it's the board's call. We don't wanna do the timeline, and we think that we need to consider it at a later date or, or time, that is at your discretion. It is the recommendation of this administration that you move forward on a potential timeline tonight.
Dr. Christoffin, I'd like to ask for some additional scenarios, then, that you first figure out the cost for a 1%, 2%, and 3% pay raise, see how much money is left over at that point after the TRE, and then figure out what AFR and bond projects can go forward from there.
And, and Mr. Schneider, I'd like to do you a few better, because not only do we need to talk about the compensation piece, I'm looking at inflation, which we have built in there. We're looking at early childhood education and any of the grants that were reduced by the legislature that we wanted to bring back. We're also looking at the impact of all those other safety and security measures and building out new schools that have M&amp;O impact, so we will do that. And I, you know, commit to this board and this community, that you will see the entire package of the impact and play it out at different levels, so that people understand what kind of pressure this could put on it, on our M&amp;O budget, but most importantly, what this means for a potential future tax ratification election. And we have those things drafted up. I met with my CFO again today, giving more feedbacks, so that when we do pull all these things together, the board has really good information to look at before you take action in December on any potential AFRs. So, and, and those things we will be sharing with the CBAC, but I think that the bond and our M&amp;O budget really have to be aligned, and we have to do it very thoughtfully, so that we can cost out the things that you mentioned, and there are several others that are still kind of floating around, that people tend to forget about after we've made some commitments. So I know there's a lot of other things that the board has already committed to from past strategic plan efforts and decisions, that we want to make sure is on, on the table too, and y'all can see those impacts. But we'll do But we'll do what you asked and some more to ensure that you see everything.
Dr. Karsharfen, I just want to be clear that, I mean, I've said several times now that this feels rushed to me. And it's really not the issue of setting a date, but more doing it the right way to get to the right place. And my concern is that we're just focusing on May of '13 because that's the next available date to us. So again, I'd just rather do it right, get it the right the first time and do it that way.
Mr. Torres.
Well, first of all, I want to emphasize a point, I think, Mr. Williams, you made in the introduction to this item, that approval of this timeline is not a call for a bond election, that it is simply allowing us and ensuring us an opportunity to not miss a critical point in time when, because of the length of time that it takes to plan for bonds, and now we're restricted on the particular times that we can actually go out for bonds during the year, we need to know that we are not missing a critical opportunity. Why? Because we currently have tremendous safety and educational quality needs all across this district as well as athletic facility needs that manifest themselves in terms of health and safety and opportunities for some of our students in extracurricular activities. So I'm certainly going to support this because we need to at least make sure that we, if we can be ready, and I certainly share Mr. Snyder's concern that we make sure that we do it right. I certainly want us to do it right. But I don't want us to not approve this opportunity and then find out that we could have possibly been ready and chose to defer it for no reason other than we did not think we might be ready. That's simply not acceptable. Second, I want to speak to the issue of rushed. I've chaired, along with at least one other board member here, or co-chaired or tri-chaired, or however you want to call it, at least two bonds. And I can tell you that the time period that we're looking at, and I actually came before a board that Mr. Snyder was sitting on. And I don't remember at that time anyone ever saying that the same period of time that we're looking at to do these things was rushed or that that board said it was rushed at that point in time. The fact, the things that I think that were not done well then, not rushed, but simply not weren't done well, was that we did not have a good and comprehensive system in place to identify ongoing maintenance needs in a district that, at that point in time, probably only had 112 campuses. And now we're up to 118 campuses plus other additional facilities that we've built even since then or considering building. And that in order to be ready in a much smarter way for those maintenance needs that turn into capital improvement needs, that we needed to have a different system in place. And thankfully, once again, through Ms. Lavoy's efforts, my efforts to push to get in place a system that helped to capture these costs. And with the addition of a standard best practice approach to identifying those capital improvement needs, that part of the bond planning process is now in much better shape than it was in the two bond programs that we worked on together. In addition to that, I have to say that there were two other changes that this board has asked for and we have incorporated into this process. And that's to ensure that we do two things. One is that we look for innovative ways to improve the quality of education. And by innovative, I don't mean experimental. I mean things that other districts are doing routinely, but we, for whatever reason, have been behind the eight ball on. One of them being in the area of technology. We are sadly behind in the area of the use of technology to enhance, not simply put a laptop or an iPad in a student's hand, but how are we using that technology to enrich the educational quality of our students? We haven't been doing that, and we need to do that. And this bond program, I am hopeful, will allow us to do that. Now, if we're not ready when we have to actually call the election, well, then we're not ready and we can defer it. The other area that we need to be mindful of as we look forward to any type of a bond is to ensure that each of our campuses, in developing their goals and visions for their academic improvements, are reflected in a bond program because many of those are capital intensive and require us to fund them with a bond program. And my, the information I have received from the members of the board, from the members of this committee, from the tri-chairs from the committee, and from principals in my district is that they have been asked to submit this information. That information has been critically reviewed by staff. It is being reviewed by staff. It is an iterative process. They're actually being listened to. And not to criticize Mr. S. or any of the other folks back there, but in this particular case, that work is actually seriously being taken into account as to how the bond can best be used to improve based on education and academics driving those needs and not simply facilities saying, you need a new air conditioner. We're going to put in a new roof. We're going to add 32,000 square feet of roofing at your school. But rather that we are allowing academics to drive the bond program. That has never, never, and I'll say it one more time, never been done in any of our bond programs before. And I can tell you that because I've now sat through three of them, one as a trustee and two on the outside. Is it perfect? No. Will it ever be perfect? No. That's just a way of doing a compromise process, doing things where we know we'll never have enough money, we'll never have enough resources, we have competing issues. And we just need to recognize that we do the best we can with what we have. We still have opportunities to continue to work with staff and to continue to cultivate and modify what's presented to us over the next few months. And once again, if we're not ready, we're not ready. But I can assure you that we are in a much better place than we have ever been at this point in time in bond planning than we have been in the past three bonds. And if we miss this opportunity, I can assure you that there are folks across the district that are going to start to leave this district because they are not seeing comparable improvements in the facilities that they feel their children, who they are paying taxes for and who they want to see these improvements made, are not being addressed. And they're not being addressed in a timely fashion. So I think it's important that we approve this timeline. Is the process perfect? No, I don't think it is. Is it much, much better than it's ever been? Absolutely. And I'm going to support this motion.
Ms. Moya.
Thank you. Just to add to the comments that have already been made, one of the things that we spoke about some time ago, probably in the spring before school was out, when we first started talking about the possibility of doing a bond and considering what the other taxing jurisdictions were doing is looking at what they were doing and determining when the best opportunity or the best timeframe would be for the school district to put a stake in the ground, as it were. As you know, many of the taxing jurisdictions announce early on when they anticipate going to the voters. And, for example, the City of Austin, I believe, put their notice out to the city about 18 months ago that they wanted to bring a bond forward in November of 2012. So we've been talking about this for some time. I think that, as my colleagues have said, this timeline is strictly that. It's a timeline. It's not a call for a bond election. We don't have a bond package put together. But our community needs to know what our planning is, what our expectations are as we move forwards that they know what kind of expectations to have as time moves on and what we're going to be doing at what intervals. So again, I do support the timeline. And I don't know if there are any other questions because I'm ready to vote if we don't have any more questions.
Let's others get a chance. Ms. Lavoy.
Thank you. I wonder if we could have a little bit of discussion around when the TRE might be scheduled because I know that some folks in the community think a bond ought to go first. Some people think a TRE ought to go first. And that's legitimate discussion. So I'm wondering, Dr. Karsharfen, if you could talk to us a little bit at this point about alternative scenarios or how the TRE might fit into the timeline in front of us? Just the benefit of your thinking, maybe the CFO's thinking, realizing that you can put a caveat around it that it's preliminary or early on or however you want to style it.
Mr. President, trustee of the board, trustee Lavoy, as we've discussed in earlier meetings, I think the biggest issue for us is really trying to watch what's happening in all the other taxing jurisdictions and having the benefit of understanding as much as they're comfortable sharing with us where they are in their timelines as well. I think we were very thoughtful about this upcoming fall, looking at some of the other things that were coming onto the ballot. And really, our window, given what is apparently happening at this time with the knowledge that we have, the window for AISD is the 2013 year. So it's that calendar year, which leaves us really with two windows, a spring window and a fall window. And then the debate from there kind of unpacks as which of the two, like you said, come first, a bond or TRE. And when we've talked to the CBAC and others, lots of different stakeholder groups, the feeling is certainly that the bond should come first at this time so that we get a sense of the kind of academic programming. You know, we led all of our AFR work. We're leading our bond work with the strategic plan, analyzing that against the board priorities and all of the action steps and things that people believe we needed to have to be able to achieve our measurable outcomes. And then, so the discussion that I've heard or that people have put in front of me has been certainly around making sure that we align all of the requests to the vision, the mission, the board goals, and all the things in strategic plan. But most importantly, to get a read from the community about those projects that they support so then we have a sense of how much may or may not need to be asked for as it relates to a tax ratification election to be able to support the big projects that are in the bond. And so, you know, it was, and you can argue it kind of the other way too, but they really felt like the work that we had in hand around the expectations of the board and the community was enough for us to put the bond piece together so that when we go for a future tax ratification election, that we have been already clear about those projects that we think are important to move Austin forward. And therefore, there would be a clear explanation for the amount of pennies we would be asking for in a future TRE.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I do have a follow-up question. Can you remind us how many, when the raises for our staff will expire? And help us understand if the bond goes first, the TRE goes second, which I'm not sure I support. I'm still thinking about that. But are we in danger of employees having reduced paychecks at anywhere in this scenario?
So the decision that the board made going into this year is a one-time, it's a one-time increase. And anything in the future would be contingent on a tax ratification election to sustain it over time. So this board knows every state's different. But this is a place where you do the, it's the rollback election. So if you took the action in November, you know, we could, we could certainly do our compensation to recognize a salary increase in that actual school year. What we've worked on in order to balance that out was to kind of wait for, if you will, the outcome of the lawsuit and the outcome of the legislative session, which may or may not give us more flexibility in our bucket and enough time for us to make other recommendations to the board as it relates to staff compensation. But at the heart of it, even if we had another window, one more window, you can't sustain a salary increase for staff without a permanent revenue stream. So that really is the meat of it. And when we, you know, we went back and forth, mostly with our citizens and the people in the advisory committees, they felt strongly that our work on the lawsuit, the legislative session, and those sorts of things would need to have finished out before we ask the citizenry to consider raising taxes around compensation. And so, you know, and you're right. I mean, I'm still torn about it too. I'm still trying to make sure that we've unpacked everything. But doing it too early, you know, people had a lot of debate back and forth on whether or not that would work against any school district in this current legislative session.
Thank you for all the detail. And as I understand what you're saying, it's a very complicated situation because we're in the litigation. A number of things are going on. There are a lot of moving parts. Is there a chance that, let me make it as simple as I possibly can, on what date does the current set of raises expire? And is there a chance that, under this whole complicated scenario, if we don't go with a TRE, that there could be some rollback in employees' salaries? In other words, can, maybe the simple question is, on what date do the raises that we voted expire?
So, and Nicole and Michael Hauser just want to be super clear. But Nicole, the final date is June 30th, correct? So it's June 30th, 2013. That's technically the last day. And again, depending on what we decide to do and not to do using the fund balance and things of that sort. And Nicole, another question just to make sure I'm not misquoting our efforts to try to keep this sorted out. A second move into a one-time increase, that is or is not possible? Do you want to, thanks? Yeah, coming out of fund balance with the other obligations we have. I know we did talk about that and it did look possible, but we knew that we would be, we may not, we might be able to get through those months, but we might not be able to continue it throughout an entire school year.
Right. We said that we would have enough to sustain it for two years. And so it would give you time to go out and secure the TRE, but you'd have a contingency plan if the TRE failed. But the whole pretense was that you had a fallback and that you would move forward with the TRE proposal.
Right. But let me just be clear before everybody gets excited. But it was, we don't know what the legislative session's going to be. We have planned for a particular bucket around reductions, not knowing what that's going to probably look like, knowing that they're going to go into, you know, an extended session, all the way through special session, you know, looking at August, that we did not want to overcommit and then find ourselves in big trouble. So we could, again, if all the stars align, but we wouldn't know that till August. And that's why we said, you know, we might be able to go into the next school year. But knowing that we had to go in a tax ratification election to ensure that we did not knowing that we had to go in a tax ratification election to ensure that we did not get ourselves in any trouble. And that's assuming that all of our assumptions about the fall legislative, I mean, the spring legislative session played out the way that we anticipated under our current strategy for how we manage this budget.
Very good. And I appreciate the discussion of the contingency possibility. How much money would it cost if we went year two to fund the raises, year two out of the fund balance?
Well, when we estimated, when we developed the initial estimate, we said the second year it would cost us 14.5 million.
Excuse me?
14.5 million.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Snyder, you got another comment?
Just a request for the Calendar Committee. I've looked at the agendas through the end of the year, and the timeline proposes a single Board of Trustees work session on the bond on February 11th. And an adoption of the call to order on the 25th, so two weeks later. But I would request that, and I know this to be a fact from our previous bonds discussions, that the board has talked about it more than once. So, I think that when we get the final proposal put together, there should be more than one board meeting to discuss the bond.
So, are you looking at the calendar?
These are the agendas that were provided in the Thursday packet that we received. And I'm looking at Exhibit A on page three of the item, and I see a single Board of Trustees holds work session to finalize the 2013 bond program scope of work, February 11th, 2013.
So, I'm just looking, so, the stuff in January, we have the scope of work and the work session on January 14th, the meeting on the 22nd and 29th of January, which will be hearings, and I suspect workshops that follow that with the work session on the February.
Well, there is a presentation on the 14th, but I took that to be a presentation and not really a discussion of...
What's the second sentence say after the presentation?
The Board of Trustees holds a work session, but are you talking about holding two different items on the same night?
I think you can have a presentation and then a work session. So, I mean, I guess I'm reading this to say that there's potentially four meetings, the 14th, the 22nd, the 29th, and the 11th before the board votes. And, Ms. Snyder, if you get to the point where you're not comfortable?
The 22nd and the 29th are public hearings.
Typically, we've had public hearings, then we have discussions, and we react to public, my experience has been, and it won't be the board, that the public hearing, that we don't close up shop and go home, that the public hearing, they weigh in, and then there's discussion after that. And I think if the board approves this timeline, then the meeting, the Calendar Committee will adjust the calendars to reflect what the board approves. So, I mean, I don't...
Which is what the request I made was.
Yes, but I mean, I think that's, that's what the proposal is. This is what the administration's recommending, and then the meetings will be set up to reflect if this is what the board approves. Ms. Brister.
So, I just wanted to say that the Calendar Committee is meeting this Wednesday, and so judging on this timeline, then we'll go through the calendar for the January, February, March to fit in all the meetings and make sure that it's clear. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Other comments or questions? Okay, well, I'm going to say, this is somewhat the catch 22 we have, you know, and I think it's been my experience over the years. We, we, we want to create a process to go through and let it work, let the community do the work, and try to have the culmination. If the board decides that there's not enough work done, the board doesn't have to vote to support it. Ultimately, the board makes a decision, or if there's enough, the board can move forward. But at the same time, we say, okay, but I don't want to start that process unless I know what the outcome's going to be, and unless we know what the answer's going to be. And it's like, I don't think we know. I mean, this is, I think we've heard tonight, we keep hearing, let's let the community do the work, let's let our task, the advisory people who are working hard try to find out what the answer is, and then ultimately, if it comes back and it's not enough, it's not the right answer, it's not the right time, then I think the board can make a decision at that point in time not to move forward. This, again, is no commitment to move forward, but it's a commitment to a process to try to shoot for May 13. We may recall over the past many months, at looking at the different government jurisdictions and the pressures because of the cuts in state and local, federal funding, there's just more pressure on local jurisdictions to make their own needs met. The money's not coming from someplace else. And 2013 was the year, it appeared, that AISD could go out to the public and ask for support. We didn't go in this November, and there's, there was other entities, ACC and others and the county, that were looking at 2014. So it made sense to go to 13. I think the Bond Committee came and asked us several times, but over the past few months, to say, let them know, are we going to, you want us to shoot for May 13? Because we're going to work a lot harder if we have to shoot for May 13. If that date doesn't make sense, and we're going to go later, we can slow down. And I think the indication we gave to them at that time was, keep working. And this is just the first official approval of the calendar that says, this is the timeline. But again, no commitment to an actual vote at this point in time, but an indication that we're going to ask this committee to work really hard to do the work, and the board's going to have to work really hard in January and February to decide if there's enough work been done to move forward. It's difficult. And one of the questions that'll come in is, what's the, what does the board know in the spring relative to the school finance litigation, relative to the legislative session, and what are all the variables? And I think that the TRE is dependent on a lot of external variables that we don't know yet. The bond demand, we know now. We have huge needs in our community and huge needs at campuses, and we can wait till after the TRE, but we don't know what the outcome's going to be. And it could be it pushes off, it could be the litigation goes to the Supreme Court, it could be we just go and go and go, and we miss a window of opportunity in 2013. Not a commitment that we're doing in 2013, but it certainly seems like we ought to thank our committee members for all their work, ask them to continue to shoot for May 13, and then the board in January, February can make a decision based on the information presented to them at that time, whether it makes sense to move forward or not. But I'm, I think, Dr. Karstafen, thank you for putting together the timeline with the committee. A lot of work's been done already. We've been talking about this for months, and it seems like it makes sense to at least continue down the May 213 path. And then if for some reason that doesn't work in the spring, then obviously the opportunity there is for the board to make that decision at that point in time. So I will support this as well. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of this, do we have a motion yet? We had a motion, right? Motion second. All in favor of this motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Abstain? Well, abstain, and Ms. Lavoy, did you vote?
Opposed.
Okay. So we had six in favor, two opposed, and one abstained. Okay, so, board, thank you very much on that item. I think, Ms. Snyder, did you oppose or abstain?
No.
Who opposed? Just Ms. Lavoy?
Ms. Lavoy.
Oh, just one of opposition. Okay, sorry. So seven in favor, one opposed, and one abstention.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, sorry for that confusion. And then, that's it on the agenda tonight. There's a presidential debate that starts right now, right? Or whatever time it started, it started at 8:00? Okay, hopefully you got DVR. So thank you all for being here. We appreciate it, and we will see you at our next meeting. It is 9:02. I got the adjournment.